Welcome to the virtual debate for Linwood City Council Position Two, presented by the Linwood Chamber of Commerce and Linwood Today. I'm Teresa Whipple, the publisher of Linwood Today, and I'm going to be your moderator tonight. And Lynda Jones, the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, is going to be our timekeeper. Lynda, thank you for doing that for us tonight. Thanks to our sponsors Edmunds College, James Russell P L C certified public accountants and business advisors in office tech. I also want to thank each of the candidates for taking time out of their busy schedules to be here with us tonight. Thank you so much to Position Two incumbent Patrick Decker and Position Two challenger Naz Leschgari. I appreciate you being here tonight. Before we get started, wanted to share the ground rules with everyone. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. Then I'll ask a series of questions, and both candidates will be given two minutes to respond to every question. After each question, the candidate will be allowed one minute to either rebut their opponent or to add additional information. And they'll indicate their desire to do so by raising their real hands rather than their virtual hands, so I make sure to see them. And only one additional comment per question, please, otherwise we'll be here all night. And after the questions, each candidate will get a one-minute closing statement. Chamber CEO Lynda Jones is going to demonstrate what the time looks like for you. That's one minute and 30 seconds and stop. And she will be diligent in making sure you know how much time is left. And since we are not in a real room to have a coin toss, we're going to go in alphabetical order, and we will start with Patrick Decker for the opening statement, and you can begin when you're ready.
Great. Well, thank you to Linwood Chamber and Linwood Today for hosting this opportunity for the community to get to know us better as candidates. I've been a resident of Linwood for over 30 years and married to my beautiful wife, who is a first-generation immigrant from Thailand for 27 of those years. We own a home here and have raised our three sons in this community. I am employed at Microsoft in the finance group focusing on strategic enterprise agreements. A graduate of University of Washington, Henry M. Jackson School of International Studies with a double bachelor's degree in Asian Studies and Chinese Language and Literature. I am fluent in Mandarin Chinese in addition to English. And for fun, last year, I read the classic Chinese novel Journey to the West in Chinese. I'm also a third-degree black belt in Taekwondo and was ranked nationally for a couple of years. I'm not a newcomer to community engagement. I've been an active in the Linwood community for as long as I've lived here. I previously served on the Linwood Planning Commission, including a term as a commission chair, and also served on the Civil Service Commission, as well as being a mentor for students at both Linwood High School and the University of Washington. I've had the opportunity and blessing of living in many places around the world. While young, I spent two years in Japan, then a good chunk of my childhood on the beaches of Southern California. My junior year of high school was spent in Compton, California, and my senior year was in Yuma, Arizona, where I worked as a field laborer harvesting cotton, vegetables, wheat, and other crops. I subsequently lived in China for three years. During, and during one 12-month period, I visited over 20 cities in China, from Xi'an to Guangzhou, as well as multiple cities in India, as part of my work for Microsoft. I'm running for Linwood City Council because Linwood is facing a great deal of growth, change, and challenges. My service and experience in the community make me the best candidate for this position to ensure that Linwood is a safe, prosperous community for folks from all walks of life. I appreciate your support, your vote in the general election on November 2nd, and I look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. Ms. Leschgari, your opening statement.
Thank you, Lynda Jones of Chamber of Commerce and Teresa Whipple of Linwood Today for hosting this event for us so voters can get to know us better. I moved to Linwood six years ago, and I fell in love with Linwood. This is where my home is, and I decided to get involved with the community and worked with the city of Linwood. For the last four and a half years, I've been serving the city of Linwood as the Chair and Vice Chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. During those four and a half years, I am proud to say that I launched the campaign of All Our Welcome for the City of Linwood, which we see the decals all over the city so that we know that all the members of our community feel safe and feel welcome in our city. I am running for City Council Position Number Two because it matters to me. Linwood is growing very rapidly, and I like to be part of that growth, and I want to make sure that we are part of the growth management. Safety is the second most important part of my campaign, and I want to make sure that All Our Welcome is truly a statement that everybody feels safe living in this city and that we have food and shelter safety as well. And with COVID, we saw a lot of healthcare inequities. And since I work at a community health center managing multiple dental clinics, it is very important for me to bring healthcare equity to the public and to the people of Linwood. These are the three platforms that I have chosen for my campaign. And I'm a University of Washington graduate, and I'm employed by C-Mark Community Health Center. And I've been in the Puget Sound area for the last 42 years and have been always involved in community. I am very proud to be part of the Linwood leadership.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our first question, and Ms. Leschgari, you'll get this one first. As Linwood prepares for a population boom with the arrival of sound transit's Linwood-like rail, what do you say to longtime Linwood residents who fear they will be priced out of the city?
As Puget Sound continued to grow, we are seeing a lot of that happening in all the cities around us. And I think it is very important to be cognizant of the fact that the population growth will continue to happen. It's not something that we can put aside and say, oh, it's okay, it's all gonna be okay. But I think the city of Linwood has done a fantastic job of creating more homes in the city center. And as we can see, as we drive around our beautiful city, we see how many new homes are coming along. And as a homeowner myself here, it is very important for me to make sure that our city continues to keep its residential aspect. So I do support the work that's been done, and I really think that we are going to be okay with all the planning that has been done by the city of Linwood and the leadership under Mayor Nicholas Smith's leadership. So I feel confident that will be okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, your two-minute response, and do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good with the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I definitely understand the fear that Linwood residents have as I look at the property value increases that we're facing. I've spoken with a lot of seniors who, it's not only that property values are increasing, but the increased value of their home has been driving up their taxes. Even individuals who haven't yet reached retirement age, their resources are being constrained because of those increased taxes. What Linwood needs to do is we're focusing on the city center and bringing multifamily into that area, multifamily condominiums, apartments type. And a good deal of that will be not as expensive as what we're seeing in some close proximity to the mall. Those will be more affordable. But I'm also strongly advocating that Linwood get more active in looking at the areas around the city and the municipal urban growth area, and look to see which of those areas we can annex that would enable Linwood to grow our footprint and have more acreage in which we can build single-family or lower-income housing. If it's out away from the city center, then the compression on the prices will be significantly less, and that should allow us to put in affordable, reasonable housing in those areas that will allow the residents of Linwood to either stay in less expensive or allow individuals to move to Linwood that are looking for a great place to live but is significantly less expensive than some of our neighbors to the south. So I think the combination of smart management through annexation of the areas around Linwood, coupled with focusing growth in the city center area for the more expensive or near the mall for the more expensive is really what we need to do in this space to ensure that housing is affordable. But we also need to partner with the county and with the state. And to do that, we have to prove we're good stewards financially of the funds that we're already getting. So the Homish County Housing Authority is a great partner. We're looking to them and hoping that they'll find more projects in Linwood that they can bring to us that are, in fact, reserved for individuals of constrained finances so that we'll be able to continue offering that type of housing to a really great demographic that we hope will continue to grow in our city.
Ms. Leschgari, did you, thank you. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, I do. I think the diversification of the homes that are available for the population is going to make sure that we can have the housing that the growth needs that we can work with. Again, as I mentioned in my previous statement, we see all these homes going up, and I think that is a wonderful thing that the city is doing and is being proactive in managing the growth and being ahead of the curve. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, did you want to add anything more?
No, nothing further on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Leschgari, I just want you to know, I did pick up on the fact that we cut you off sooner than the two minutes the first time. We're still kind of getting our timing right, so we've got that straightened out now, so my apologies for that. Okay, we'll move on to the next question. And Mr. Decker, this one will go to you first. There is a belief that some council members in Linwood might align themselves with political parties, even though the city's elected positions are nonpartisan, and that council members are listening to outside interests rather than their own constituents. Do you align your views with a political party? And if so, what do you say to those who believe it hurts your ability to represent all residents in your decision-making?
It's a really good question. What I've done for my campaign is I have been completely self-funded from day one. Although I have a great deal of support from various entities in the community, including business, including political parties and such, I have committed to paying for my campaign out of my own pocket. I'm not accepting individual or business contributions. I did that because I want to remain independent of those forces. I don't want to have to answer to someone who wrote a check to me somewhere down the road, and they're asking for me to respond on an issue in a way that favors them over perhaps someone else. So I'm able to maintain my independence, and I intend all the way through the general election to maintain that independent stance. I do recognize there are certainly, in the last couple of months, there has been a great deal of outside influence and voices coming into Linwood. It's amazing that on some of the issues, we have heard from people from New Jersey, from Oklahoma, from other parts of the United States, and certainly from our neighbors to the south. So it's important that Linwood recognize we're very unique from virtually any other city in the region, perhaps even in the state. Our demographic is quite a bit different. It doesn't really fall under party lines by any means. We're truly a multi-issue type of a populace, and I don't think it's wise for council members or leaders to align to political parties when the constituents themselves are not aligned to political parties in a clear bifurcation. We need to listen to the community. We need to be out in the community, and when the community brings us their ideas, we need to look at it not from a principled position of what does that mean to a particular party or how it might help a party or position, but focus really on how does that help the people of Linwood, both the residents who are here now, as well as those that we hope will move here, and the businesses we need to invest in Linwood in order to support that growth. So strong favor of independents in candidates and in our campaigning. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leschgari?
I have a request, if you would please, every time we come back. If you can ask a question, I would really appreciate that.
Sure, I'm happy to do that anytime, and I normally do ask. And this is a long question, so let me do it. There is a belief that some council members in Linwood may align themselves with political parties, even though the city's elected positions are nonpartisan, and that council members are listening to outside interests rather than their own constituents. Do you align your views with a political party? And if so, what do you say to those who believe it hurts your ability to represent all residents in your decision-making?
As this is a nonpartisan position, as is mayor, as is city council, in local governance, I don't think that your party really matters. It's what you're doing for the community and what you can do for the Linwood community. As I go door-knocking and talking to people, I was being asked about a lot of the things that are divided in the party line, and I finally had to stop the person that was asking me all these questions and say, this is a nonpartisan position. It doesn't matter where I stand or what party I believe and support. This is a nonpartisan position. It's for all the people of Linwood. And as council members, our job is to make sure that we pass legislation and balance the finances for the city of Linwood. And I think it's very important for all of us to be cognizant of that and to make sure that we are not influenced by party line. We all have our own personal parties that we belong to or we like to be part of or we support. But I think as the job of a city council member, it is very important to keep the partisanship out of our campaigning and make sure that it is understood that it is for all the people of Linwood. City council positions are to serve everyone, and so are mayor oppositions. You cannot have a partisan stand for a small city, you know, for any local governance. I think it's very important to make sure that we keep partisanship out of this. But as you say, unfortunately, that is what is happening at the city council, and we are seeing that. So hopefully, we want to move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Decker, did you have any response or additional information you wanted to add?
No, nothing further on this right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Leschgari? Very good. We'll move on to the next question, and this one will go to Ms. Leschgari first. What is your approach to collecting input from residents and incorporating it into your decision-making? Can you provide an example of where your initial inclination on a decision was changed by constituents' feedback?
You know, survey is the first thing that comes to my mind. That has been traditionally what cities do to get the information they need from the constituents. Couple of years ago, when George Floyd was murdered, we had, as the Chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, we had community meetings with members of the Linwood community. And their input was very important, and a lot of the people wanted us to do things that are real meaningful actions for the city of Linwood to bring diversity and equity and inclusion to the city. So for me personally, what I have seen in the city, working with the city in the last four years, was having those community meetings and getting the input from the public as to what is it that they want us to do? What is it that they think we are missing that we need to do? And I think always going to the public, to the community, to hear what the community is asking for. And I really urge our public to get more involved with the governance of our city because it really does matter what you say and what you want for the city. It is your vision that the city has to implement, and it is the community's vision that we like to work with to make sure that all the members of our community feel comfortable. So yes, I think survey is the way to go to contact the public to see what is their input and just getting the public more involved and doing things more with the public, like fare on the 44th Street that we haven't been able to do because of COVID and a lot of the things like that, that gets the community more involved, be part of the decision-making of our city. I think that's important.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Decker, did you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have the question. For those who have been watching Linwood City Council broadcasts, are probably aware that recent meetings have been unusually difficult. Attendance has been, I think, perhaps record high. I don't know that for a fact, but it certainly seems as though that's true. I've issued invitations during those meetings to individuals who are either attending or who are listening to meet with them one-on-one to better understand their views in a forum where we can have a dialogue. Because in public hearings, we actually are not able to have open dialogue and a back-and-forth conversation as much as the public might like. And I've been very fortunate that members of the community have taken me up on that offer, and I have been able to meet with those individuals and understand what their experience is, understand what their ideas are, understand where their pain points and their hardships are at. I recognize that my background is not the same background as everyone in Linwood. There's a lot of people in Linwood who have a much different experience than what I have had. And meeting with these people face-to-face, sitting across a table, having coffee with them, in some cases, meeting them in their homes, I have come to understand that the Linwood experience has been difficult for some segments of our community, more difficult than I had previously been aware. They're based on what they've shared with me. There have been incidents where members of some minorities feel and probably were unfairly treated while they've been in Linwood. And that really has affected how I am emphasizing ensuring public responsibility for individuals who do lead in Linwood and ensuring that we lead from a position that all people need to be trusted, need to be treated justly and fairly, regardless of race, age, demographic, religion, or any other differentiator. We are all residents of Linwood. We must all be treated fairly. And having those conversations really meant a lot to me to understand those experiences.
Thank you very much. Ms. Leschgari, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Mr. Decker, are you good?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the next question, and this one will go to Mr. Decker first. As a legislative body, the city council is supposed to provide needed check and balance for the executive branch/mayor and his or her administration. How would you work with your fellow council members to create a strong legislative vision and implement it?
It's kind of two questions when I listen to it. The first is checks and balances. Check and balance is about trust and relationships. Anytime you're talking about a legislative body, there has to be great communication between the council and the administration, and that includes a staff. There has to be trust that this isn't a game of gotcha where a member of the council looking for an opportunity to cast an unfavorable light on either the mayor or on the staff, the administration, and vice versa as well. We're all here to help Linwood, and it does us well to remember that the public is watching. And although individuals may feel they score small points in perhaps when casting that negative light, at the end of the day, it really weakens our ability to lead and weakens our ability to create proper legislation for Linwood. Back to trust and creating strong legislation. The council, as it currently sits, I think, is a very, very diverse political entity. We probably run a very broad spectrum of political ideology, but despite that, for my time that I've been on the council, we have had extremely healthy relationships. We have been really able to talk to one another and disagree with one another in a very cordial collegiate way. We're able to share and express our ideas in a clear way without it being attacking or without it being divisive. And this is really critical because if I can trust you to be able to talk to me and share your ideas, and you trust me to do the same, and I don't have to worry about you kind of taking shots at me, then I'm going to be able to be more honest. I'm going to be less worried about making a mistake that may create an avenue for attack, and I'll be more interested in how do I communicate with you? How do I share my ideas? And how do I hear your great ideas? And then how do we bring those together? How do we balance them? Because my great ideas and your great ideas might start in different places, but we can definitely find a place where they come together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leschgari, I'll repeat the question for you. As a legislative body, the city council is supposed to provide a needed check and balance for the executive branch/mayor and his or her administration. How would you work with your fellow council members to create a strong legislative vision and implement it?
Thank you. I do believe work in all areas of management is important. Every basis of every relationship is trust and respect. And I think the most important thing that we can do is to make sure that we work with integrity, with honesty, and that we can create an environment of trust and not bring partisanship into the conversation. And as far as what is happening right now, I think it's very important to work with transparency together and create a team that will be looking out for city of Linwood and the interests of city of Linwood and what the community members need us to do. And the job of city council is to make sure that we balance the finances and make sure that we pass legislation that supports the city and make sure that we can have the interest of the city of Linwood in heart. I think working with the mayor and the city council as a team is the best thing that we can do. And because I have worked in healthcare for the last 25 years and have traveled extensively in different parts of the world, I think that gives you a lot of experience that allows you to know that working with integrity and honesty and building relationships on trust and respect will allow you to move forward in taking care of the members of the community with clarity. So that's very important, and I think that's how we can build trust and respect. And moving forward, we can definitely have a team that works for the city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, do you want to add anything more?
No, thank you.
Ms. Leschgari, anything else for you? Very good. We'll go on to the next question. I apologize, these are long ones, so I'll do my best to make sure we get through them okay. Mr. Decker, you'll start first on this one. The Linwood City Council recently voted to approve a $69 million community justice center, expanding the city's police department, jail, and municipal courts. The project has been planned for years, but many who do not follow local news only recently found out about it. How do you plan to inform the community about the project, and what plans do you have for keeping residents apprised of other major decisions that impact the city?
Great question. Two parts there. How do we keep the community informed as we go along with this plan, and how do we apprise them of upcoming plans? The first, I think, is actually easier. This particular project has received so much attention in the public, in the press, and not just the press in Linwood. This has received press from all over the region, and it's amazing how much interest and people are paying to this particular project. We do have the city website where there is a dedicated portal related to the Community Justice Center, and I know that Linwood Today and other publications are very good at keeping the public updated on those as well. The bigger question, I think, is how do we ensure that the public is aware of these types of major infrastructure projects in a very early time so that they feel they have the opportunity to provide input and that they're able to then follow along as a project moves? And that's a bigger challenge. It goes back to the question of, there's so much going on in Linwood and so many different projects and activities, that how do we inform the public of everything that's going on in a way that is, one, brief, because they don't have a lot of time to pay attention to all of this? And, two, is informative and ensures that they have enough information that they can bring their And two, is informative and ensures that they have enough information that they can bring their thoughts and feelings. I do believe we'll continue to lean on local media heavily in this regard. And I think the city, especially as we get out of the COVID period, we really need to spend more time on the streets, the community fairs, park, stop and visits, types of activities where we make the city council and staff and administration make ourselves available. I'll be at this place and time. Please come by, be happy to talk to you about what's going on in the city and share our ideas and activities. We have been hindered by COVID. As we're able to come out of that, our ability to reach out and be in the community will increase. Between that and what we can lean on from the media and the city portal, I think this is how we're going to best keep the community apprised.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lashgari, repeat the question for you. The Linwood City Council recently voted to approve a $69 million Community Justice Center, expanding the city's police department, jail, and municipal courts. The project has been planned for years, but many who do not follow local news only recently found out about it. How do you plan to inform the community about the project? And what plans do you have for keeping residents apprised of other major decisions that impact the city?
Thank you, Teresa, for reading the questions. I appreciate that.
You bet.
I think $69 million is a lot of money for our community to be spending on the Community Justice Center without the input of the community. I think anything over $25 million has to go to the public to get their opinion, get their input. I am not saying that every time we want to pass something or deal with any projects that are coming up for the City of Linwood, we need to have the input of the public to be able to move forward with it because that is going to be hindering the growth and the work that needs to be done, and it will slow things down. But for a $69 million project for this, at this level, I think with the task force that the mayor had put on the last part of the project to see what else we can do, I think it wasn't really thought of very thoroughly. And for those of us who follow what is happening in the city, phase one and two, phase one can get started, but phase two and three, which is the most important part of this, I think, how are we going to fund that? How are we going to start with that? How are we going to continue the work that we need to do with this work? So I believe it's very important for the community to be involved in big decisions. This is a very big decision. And I do believe that we still need to review. I know the city council passed it, but I really wish that we could ponder on this more and study it more and research it more and see where are we going to get the funds to continue this work that we need to do and make sure that phase two and three can be done.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, any additional information you wanted to add?
Sure, in this case, just a couple of quick comments. The Community Justice Center, this is not a new project. It certainly predates my time on the city council. They've been working on it for, I believe, three or more years at this point. It has been a common or a fairly frequent subject of city council business meetings. And it certainly has been on the city website as one of our very large projects for quite some time. Given that there are portions of the community that seem to have been caught by surprise by the project, it is clear that the communication strategies we've been leveraging probably are insufficient going forward. We'll have to look at better ways to reach out to the community. However, this decision on the CJC is not one that was made hastily, nor was it made quickly. Intensive studies were conducted both by city staff and also by independent parties, looking at the financial viability of this particular facility and even looking at the changes we're recommending for the phase-two portion. So well-thought-out, well-studied, important project. But definitely, we need to think about how we inform the public better on these.
Thank you. Ms. Lashgari, anything else you wanted to add?
Yes, I do. I think it is very important to consider the public and understand the concerns that the public have. And as the mayor had put a task force, a lot of those issues came up. And I think those are the community inputs that we need to take into consideration to be able to move forward with projects such as the City of Linwood Community Justice Center. So it is important to consider what the communities are saying, even if it's in the last minute. It is important to consider that and to take into consideration as to what are their concerns and what are the things that are concerning the community so that we can leverage this. Even though time has been given to this, research has been done and all of that, I think more research and more time was needed to move forward.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next question will go to Ms. Lashgari first. The City of Linwood was allocated $10.9 million in American Rescue Act Plan, American Rescue Plan Act funds to be paid over two years. So far, the city has spent $882,000 to fill some vacant staff positions, make technology improvements for streaming public meetings online, and purchase police-worn body cameras. How else should the city spend the federal relief funds?
I think those are wonderful investments that the city has done. But I think the public funds, the rescue public funds, should be also rescuing the public. I know a lot of businesses and a lot of people who've had to have suffered due to this COVID pandemic that we've had because of businesses having to lose customers, a lot of businesses weren't able to keep afloat or keep their doors open. A lot of people lost their jobs. So I would look into the community assistance so that we can get people back on track. As a person who is in healthcare, I always say invest some of it in verdant to make sure we make we take care of the healthcare of our community. That is very important to make sure that we can continue to keep healthy. And honestly, the most important thing is to get people back on track. I think a lot of people have suffered. A lot of people can't afford their housing. A lot of people with family members are really having a lot of safety issues, food safety, shelter safety. And children that are going to school, I think a lot of the people who have families really could use more help. And I think even though I don't have children, but I do support children's health. And I think it is very important that our community supports the children so that children do not go homeless or hungry. And these funds are there to help the community and help the public. So I don't know how I would allocate the funds specifically, but I think this is something to look into to make sure we help the public.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker?
I have the question, so I'll go ahead.
Okay.
This is something we've been working on from in the city council quite intensively, the last couple of months at least. I think it's, in my experience, there is no better investment than in education. And when the discussion around ARPA was brought to the city council, my first suggestion in that space was, how do we invest this in education for our community? It is very unusual where a well-planned education does not return huge dividends, both for the individual and for the community as well. So education, education, education. And by education, I mean scholarships, technology, making sure that students in our community have the proper technology, if that's computers or if it's Wi-Fi, if it's connections to the internet. It means trade skills training, making sure that members of our community who aren't interested in a college education but are interested in getting a trade skill, that's things like carpentry, electrician, computer technology, culinary arts. There's a host of different trade skills. We should be investing to be able to bring those trade skills to our community. And in fact, we have a great partnership going right now with Edmunds College and some other partners, a pre-apprenticeship program where individuals can get free, completely free, pre-apprenticeship training for skills that they can then turn around and go into journeyman positions. It's actually on the city website, so you can look it up there. Great opportunity. We should invest in community programs and activities. We've all been isolated and cut off from one another for so long that getting the fair on 44th backup, getting the parks in a great state so we can go out and enjoy them, these are critical to bring our community back together again, helping us heal and helping to ensure that we are a united community and that we don't have the divisions that other communities have. Finally, I would say public safety. The body cameras for the police are important. There are other areas we can invest in public safety, not just law enforcement, but certainly our social and welfare programs for mental and substance abuse. And then community beautification. These are great investments that will pay huge dividends to the city for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lashgari, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Mr. Decker, anything more?
No, nothing more. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, next question, and this will go to Mr. Decker first. How will you ensure the critical needs of those who are homeless in Linwood be met without enabling Seattle-style issues such as public camping, trash-along streets, and related public safety concerns?
That is a very tough question. There is no silver bullet for this one. There is no easy answer for this one. However, as we've been briefed on the city council about what is driving homelessness in our area, it's clear that there's a reasonable number of those individuals who are homeless because of either substance abuse issues or mental health issues. And if we're able to better address those two issues via tools other than incarceration, then I think we're going to be able to help those individuals move out of a situation where they're homeless to one where they actually have more opportunities and where they're able to actually better care for themselves or have community support for their care so that they are in a better habitat than the homeless that we see around the edges of our city right now. We do have to make sure that Linwood laws are enforced in this space. The city has passed laws, and the community has been happy with the laws regarding tents and other types of dwellings within the city. And that continues to be an area that the city is in very strong support of our existing legislation. What we have to do is make sure we're parsing the individuals who are looking for help, and we bring the help to their doorstep, literally, so that when they're at a point in their decision-making tree that they have decided they want help, they want to change their circumstances, we have the resources primed and ready. Far too often, individuals decide they want to make a change, but the community doesn't have the resources ready for them to be able to help them make that change. And then they go off and they fall into bad patterns of behavior where they again change their mind and are no longer interested in that help. Certainly, phase two of the Community Justice Center, by bringing a substance abuse and mental health facility into an adjacent proximity to the jail, is going to help this. Studies have shown, and it was brought to us by Representative Davis, when individuals who are incarcerated have that type of help begin while they're incarcerated, their ability to heal and overcome is hugely grown versus otherwise. So Community Justice Center, get that built, get phase-two built, and then social help for those that are looking for it.
Thank you. Ms. Lashgari, you need me to repeat that question? Very happy to do it. How will you ensure the critical needs of those who are homeless in Linwood be met without enabling Seattle-style issues such as public camping, trash-along streets, and related public safety concerns?
As you mentioned, Seattle-style, the homelessness issue is a regional crisis, truly, that has now reached Linwood. And mental health issues, economic issues, opioid crisis, lack of good-paying wages, and lack of affordable housing is fueling this crisis in our region. I think the best way to deal with the homelessness issue is to provide interim shelter for these individuals to help them with the challenges that they're facing. I commend the Linwood Police Department for bringing a social worker a couple of years ago to deal with the issue of homelessness so that to decriminalize homelessness so that they can discuss with homeless individuals to see what the problem is and if they can extend a hand in helping a homeless person, whether it's an opioid issue, whether it's a mental health issue, whether it's lack of being able to afford housing or having a good job, that they can be not homeless. And I think that those kind of programs is very important to bring into our city. It is going to take a long time to build the Community Justice Center and to go to phase-two since we don't know what budgeting we have to do that. However, what we are doing currently with the social worker at the Linwood Police Department and continuing to have the conversation with these individuals to see how can the city help them so that they can be helped. And I think the showers that are now in Linwood, that they can take a shower and do wash their clothes and have some kind of some kind of support that they can get out of this cycle that they get into.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, did you have anything else to add?
No, thank you. Nothing more on this.
Ms. Lashgari, anything more?
Yes, I think the homelessness issue is, as I mentioned at the beginning, is a regional crisis. And unless we do something about it, this is going to continue to grow. So it is very important that we find a solution for this and create interim shelters, if possible, to help our community members who are in this horrible situation, whether it's due to mental health or opioid crisis or any other issue, that we can help these individuals to succeed.
Thank you very much. Next question, and we'll start with Ms. Lashgari on this one. Describe your experience working collaboratively with other jurisdictions to address regional issues and name one regional project you would like to see the City of Linwood develop with other jurisdictions.
Okay, in collaboration, as the Chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, I collaborated with members of our own city. The only other jurisdiction that I have collaborated with was City of Bellevue while we were trying to start our race and social justice coordinator position. So we worked as a commission. We've worked with City of Bellevue to see how they've been doing that because they were so much more ahead of us. However, internally, I am very proud to say I worked with the Linwood Police Department. At the time, there was a lot of problem with undocumented immigrants. So I worked with Chief Davis and the Linwood Police Department in creating cards that were written in different languages so that undocumented immigrants would know their rights so that we can inform them for like Edmunds College and a lot of places that in our city that we would have undocumented immigrants or just immigrants so that they know because there was a lot of arrests being made that were just, we needed to inform our public so that they know what is happening with the city. How, what would I like to see the region? I think St. Homish County is growing very rapidly, all the cities in St. Homish County. And I think there are a lot of projects in the works. I really can I really can't think of any right now as to how I would work with other regions, but I think with City of Edmunds and definitely Mount Lake Terrace, we can have a lot of conversations on how to work together as three different municipalities and move forward in making sure that our safety and our cities are thriving.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker?
Thank you. When I was on the Planning Commission a few years ago, we had just begun looking at the city center subarea plan, what the zoning for that would look like and what building heights would look like, what the infrastructure needed to be. And this was all very new to Linwood. We didn't really have a lot of experience and nobody on staff had a great deal of experience with this type of planning. But we were fortunate enough to be able to partner with Bellevue and the Bellevue Planning Commission and Bellevue City officials. We actually traveled down there as a governmental body and had face-to-face conversations with individuals who had been in Bellevue government and planning for quite some time. And we talked to them about the challenges they faced early on in Bellevue. And Bellevue was pretty much a bedroom community and how they communicated out to the community, how they built consensus for what their city center should look like and how they managed that change. And that was really key in that we were able to learn from them what went well and what didn't go well and how, as we were planning for the Linwood City Center, we could try and avoid some of those hiccups and headaches that they had. So hugely beneficial being able to go down there and have those conversations. Also, during that time, we were working closely on the Municipal Urban Growth Area, the MOOGA Act, and what that meant to the non-incorporated areas of Salsnosh County. Particularly, we worked with the City of Mill Creek, looking at the broad expansive properties between Mill Creek's city limits and Linwood's city limits, talking about what the vision was from Mill Creek Planning and City Council and Linwood Planning and City Council and where the overlap between what Linwood my annex and what Mill Creek my annex. We had a lot of really substantive conversations. Then, as I recall, we even invited their planning commission to come in and talk to us about what areas they had under consideration for annexation. What we were trying to do was to avoid building a plan where we annexed to a point east that had a significant overlap with what they were going to annex to west. And then our plans wouldn't work out because we'd be in conflict. So great conversations with them. Had a lot of open areas left, but I really enjoyed the collaboration in the cross-entity work that we did there.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lashkari, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Decker, anything more?
No.
Okay, thanks. We'll go on to the next question. And this will go to Mr. Decker first. What role should the city council play in supporting BIPOC residents and ensuring that Linwood is a welcoming city to its increasingly diverse population?
Great question. Supporting the BIPOC community, supporting all members of the community who have barriers that are unfair. I was in a conversation earlier today, and our nation was founded on the concept of equal opportunity for all. And sometimes that means not just that the opportunities have to be fair and equal, but that barriers may be unequal and those unequal barriers have to be removed for certain segments of the community. That also means that what we need to do is provide great opportunities so that individuals who are interested in improving their circumstances have the support and have the tools that they need. And to me, this really comes back to ensuring that Linwood is a great place to live and that Linwood continues to be a very attractive investment for the business community. We have had some major projects come into Linwood recently, both in terms of some of our multifamily that's being built and is planned, but also, as example, the construction of Home Depot and some other Hallmark businesses. Those businesses look carefully at what opportunities are in the area. And it was a huge help to Linwood that they are confident that their investment in Linwood is going to pay off, that we're going to continue to grow and that our community is going to be a strong, healthy, and safe one that will be able to visit their stores and support those businesses. We've got to bring business, high-paying jobs to Linwood. That will support the BIPOC community and the rest of the community as well. And we can do that by ensuring that we plan our city structure, our city infrastructure, our city center project in a way that's very successful for everyone. We have got to ensure that the businesses know that we are in this for the long run. We are going to be successful. We are going to have the best collaboration between public and private, the best partnerships between community and government, and the best support across all of those various entities to make sure that we build something that the community can be proud of, that the community wants to participate in, that businesses will look at as a great opportunity and that will bring those opportunities for work, for housing, and for leisure to not just the BIPOC, but the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lashkari, what role should the city council play in supporting BIPOC residents and ensuring that Linwood is a welcoming city to its increasingly diverse population?
As I was the Chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, the most important thing that I think we had to do was to make sure that we have a race and social justice coordinator in the city so that the BIPOC community knows that there is a voice, that there is a place in the City of Linwood that their voice can be heard. Besides my lived experiences, I think it is very important to continue the conversation of "all are welcome." And again, I keep going back to that because that is not just a tagline. That is something that we really do need to work on to make sure that our BIPOC community, LGBTQ community, all the members of the communities that feel marginalized know that they can come to Linwood and they can live in Linwood and be in an area that they feel safe. And I think it is very important to let the people that are marginalized know that we are working, we will be working with the law enforcement to make sure that their safety, that they feel safe in the City of Linwood, that their safety is not something that they need to be worried about because historically, we know that BIPOC communities are arrested more, are having to deal with the justice center issues, and the law enforcement needs to be more educated on the BIPOC community to work together so that that feeling of safety is understood for all the members of the community. For me, equity will mean that we provide opportunities that will result in equal outcome. And I'm supposed to stop, but I will continue this conversation.
Thank you. Well, you each have an opportunity to add another little bit if you want. Mr. Decker, do you have anything else to add?
No, nothing more for me on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lashkari, did you want to continue with anything else?
Yes, I do. And I do not believe that everybody has equal access to equal opportunity. I do not think it is equal opportunity at all, actually. I think members of the BIPOC community and immigrants and LGBTQ and all the marginalized people have to work a lot harder to be able to be considered at the table. So we do need to make sure that we do create the tools that are necessary to make sure that we consider each person's circumstance and provide opportunities that can result in equal outcome. And this is very important for me to make sure that we really do say "all are welcome" and mean it.
Thank you very much. All right, this is actually a short question, and we'll start with Ms. Lashkari. If elected, what will be your spending priorities in the next budget?
Infrastructure will be my priority. At the top of my campaign, the most important thing is growth management. And I think making sure that infrastructure and all the infrastructure is being renewed as we are growing. We know it is very important that we need to continue to make sure that our infrastructure can support that growth. Water safety is becoming an issue, and I think it's something that we do need to pay attention to. And water and sewer is very important. And I think just making sure that the infrastructure can get updated and we can it is truly a budget, budgeting issue. And I know it's a very expensive work that needs to happen, but it does need to happen. And just managing the growth of the city by making sure that we support the infrastructure so that we can continue to be a city that is, we can have the lifestyle that we have, that we can continue to have the green spaces that we have to invest in the parks and make sure that we will have areas that support environmental equity. And those are the areas that I will invest in. But I think infrastructure is the most important in managing the growth.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, what would be your spending priorities in the next budget?
There are so many priorities. Listing out a top priority, I would start with public safety and health. I agree with Ms. Lashkari that infrastructure is critical to where we're at and where we're going. But so much of the angst I hear from the community when I'm either meeting with them or when I'm following along with what's going on in our community has to do with public safety and the decline in public safety or the decline in the feeling of public safety within our community. I think a lot of that can be addressed through investments in substance abuse and mental health-issue facilities. As we are able to help solve some of these problems and provide opportunities for these disadvantaged individuals, they will become a more central part of our community. And there is a fair amount of porch piracy, shoplifting, and minor crime that does stem from individuals who have substance abuse or mental health issues. So if we can begin to address some of the root problems there, that is going to begin to kind of turn the tide on these community safety issues that are becoming so prevalent or are really becoming such great concern for members of our community. Following that, infrastructure is critical. We were briefed by staff this week that we are falling behind on our street overlay projects. We actually haven't been budgeting enough for those street overlays. And certainly, anyone who drives around Linwood can see the results of that lack of budgeting. It's not because we are budgeting elsewhere. It's simply that we really don't have enough budget for everything that we need to invest in. I think we need to continue investing in planning, making sure we have really sharp staff who understand how to plan for a city that's going through the type of growth that we are and that they're able to leverage world-quality experts to come in and help us with our planning. Finally, we need to invest in open spaces. We cannot become a community of buildings. We have got to ensure that Linwood continues to be a beautiful place. Anecdotally, I'll say this really quick. I sent a picture to a friend of mine elsewhere around the country of my neighborhood, and I said, "Look, fall colors," and he said, "Wait, you look like you live in a forest." And that's what Linwood is. It's a beautiful place. We need to make sure we preserve that part of our identity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lashkari, anything more from you on that?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Decker, anything more?
No, Linwood's a beautiful place. Let's keep it beautiful by managing growth property.
Okay, thank you very much. I promise we're getting close to the end. Just a few more questions. This next one will go to Mr. Decker first. Define affordable housing using your definition of affordable and give us an example of a successful project in a similar city where it has worked.
Great question. Affordable housing to me means, oh, there's a spectrum of affordable housing. And there isn't a bar or a cost that defines what affordable housing is. We need to ensure that individuals who want to live in our community have the opportunity to buy housing in our community or be in housing in our community. And that means we have to offer a range of different types of housing. We do have some interim housing that was offered by one of the congregations over on 196. It's been very successful. And I'd like to see more of that interim housing that allows people to move from a homeless state into housing and then advance from there. I do think that in the areas outside of the city, as we annex those areas, we really should ensure that the construction that goes into those areas falls into a demographic that is as broad as possible. We know that we're going to have high-end demographic construction, and that's already going on in the city. In terms of what has happened elsewhere, a long time ago, Paulsboro invented, I'm sorry, invested in some, what we would now call tiny homes. Paulsboro is a very small community, much smaller than Linwood. But they invested in, I believe it was 30 or 40 of these tiny homes where there was a lot of shared resources. And by that, I mean these tiny homes didn't have all the resources that you might find in traditional housing. But it was very successful in allowing people with a very limited income to have a great roof over their head, to have shelter, and to have a place they call home. Salt Lake City is currently investing in exactly the same thing, but at a much, much larger scale. They have these, they're actually transportable tiny houses that they're setting up in various parts of the cities. And they're vetting the individuals that are, that apply and are able to move into those projects to make sure that those are safe for all of the residents, that there is not an increase in crime in those, but that they do provide a great alternative to more traditional housing where people can call these houses home and really get a place to start and build from. So I think these are great opportunities that Linwood can look at, especially in the areas just outside our current boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lashkari, define affordable housing using your definition of affordable and give an example of a successful project in a similar city that has worked.
Thank you. So affordable housing, the formula for affordable housing is 30% of your income should go to your housing. I think the issue that is fueling unaffordability is the fact that in the last 20 years, wages have really not gone up that much. And so it is, the end of this issue is looking at good-wage jobs that can create affordability. I really feel for the younger generation because during my generation, you could graduate, get a job. A few years later, you can buy a home. And now that is not the case anymore for the younger generations to do that. And affordable housing versus public housing are two different things. Affordable housing, again, as I said, you need to be able to put 30% of your income into your housing. But I think what we can do as a city is to make sure that the homes that we are creating, the homes that are being built, we can diversify housing, make sure that we have multiple forms of housing like condos and townhomes and different-sized homes that can go from small homes to bigger homes so that can be affordable. I think rezoning is important to make sure, to allow maybe single homes, single-family units to be able to create mother-in-laws on their properties so that we can resolve the housing issue. And I think incentivizing developers when they, you know, to give them some kind of incentive so that when they do housing here, that some of it can be allotted to be less expensive so that it can be more affordable, so that people can access that. I'm supposed to stop, so I'll wait to continue on with that.
Thank you. Well, first, Mr. Decker, do you have anything more to add?
Very quickly, just as a follow-up there. As I mentioned, affordable, it was a great definition that Nas provided. As I mentioned affordable, it was a great definition that Nas provided there. Affordable means different things to different people. Linwood is very affordable if you compare it to some of our neighbors to the south in terms of what real estate prices are. What we need to do is begin accessing those great paying jobs and bring them to Linwood so that individuals can enjoy the finances that are offered through some of those jobs, but not have to pay the exorbitant real estate fees that, that are common in our communities to ourselves. This brings us back to the city center success again. This will hinge on Linwood attracting investment. We've got to make the city center a stellar program, a fantastic project. People will talk about this project and this will be a destination city with all of the amenities that people have come to expect from some of the more mature communities, but at much more affordable prices. That will bring those great jobs. It will bring people from a variety of economic demographics and it will help the city finance so that we will be able to budget and help the families that aren't necessarily in those higher demographics. We'll be able to support them better through the services that we offer.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lashgari?
And the second part of the question was that if other cities, what they have done in other cities, they, I really can't think of any example of other cities doing that, but I really believe diversifying housing and what we provide for the community so that people can have an option so that it's not just either single homes or condos, that there is something in between, that there is some form of grading as to what can be done for each individual. And again, as I said, zoning is also important to make sure that if I want to have a mother-in-law on my property so that my aging mother or sister or whomever who cannot afford their home can come and live with me who can afford to have the home that I have, you know. So I think these are the issues that we really need to look into and continue the conversation.
Thank you very much. Next question, go to Ms. Lashgari first. Since the council has returned to holding its public meetings remotely in light of COVID-19 pandemic, what ideas do you have for ensuring that city council members remain accessible to the public?
I am avid supporter of Zoom. I think it's fantastic. I really do think a lot more people are joining in the meetings because of the Zoom accessibility of that. And you know, I, I really don't know what to say against that, that would say what would be more accessible. I think this is very, this is a very good platform. This makes the city council people be very accessible that you can watch the whole program from the comfort of your home without having to go to the city hall. And without, and you can easily contact the city council members and on the city website, all of that is there. I really am an avid supporter of this, so I can't say anything against it. So I think people should take advantage of this. I really believe this was the silver lining of the COVID to bring us all together like this and to be able to have these meetings and to just be part of it all. I somehow feel closer, honestly, because I have, I can attend a lot more meetings. I can be more involved. And I just can't say enough about how wonderful I think this is.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker?
I really agree that Zoom has resulted in more participation from the community, certainly for individuals who have accessibility issues or are mobility impaired. Their ability to participate in a very meaningful way from their home or their office or wherever they may be from their, from their mobile phone is a huge help in bringing the community together and in increasing the diversity of input that the city council is able to receive. Unfortunately, Zoom does come with its own weaknesses, anonymity being one of those. And unfortunately, Zoom has allowed a negative element to come into our city council meetings. We need to research and invest technology that continues to facilitate the dialogue, but prevents the hateful and racist rhetoric that really has, we've seen in some of our recent meetings. It's completely unacceptable that someone would think it's okay to share or express themselves in that way to begin with. But I think the city has a responsibility that our platform, our city, our Zoom meetings are not allowed to be a platform for that type of rhetoric, that type of comment. So we do need to make some investment there. As far as the, the council connecting with the community, we started to be moving in that direction as COVID started to ease earlier before Delta came along. And as I think we continue to get the vaccination rate up and as our own immune systems grow stronger and we see the impact from this virus or other viruses decrease, we will get back out into the community through community events. And some of those will be formal events. There'll be things like the fair on 44. There'll be things like meet the council at the park. There'll be things like ribbon cutting ceremonies and these types of activities where the council is out there inter, intermingling with the community. But I do think we should have some more formal opportunity for the city to engage in a casual way. And that means I, I, I for one, really hope that we get to the point where I'm simply able to go down to Wilcox Park or Scriber Lake or any of our parks and just be there and allow the, let the city community know that I am a council member and I'm looking for their input. I'm looking for their ideas. I'd love to talk with them and just share their vision for what Linwood is and can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Do either of you have anything more to add on that one? Good? Okay, we'll move on. This one will go to Mr. Decker. As more development occurs in Linwood, it also means the removal of trees from our city. Do you have ideas for protecting the city's tree canopy?
That's a great question. I don't think that growth and protection of our environment are contrary to one another, particularly as we have set up the planning for the city center area. There is a lot of investment that is going to happen in terms of the city carving out open space and green space. One of the challenges we face with growth, we have faced with growth in Linwood is that we do have increasing populations and that means we need more businesses, means we, we need more houses, more residences. And historically, Linwood has had height restrictions on both businesses and on our residential units. That meant that we had to create more single or two-story dwelling units. And that took up a larger footprint. And the more houses you put down, the more driveway, sidewalk, streets and et cetera you're building, the fewer permeable surfaces. With the city center project and the ability to move tall to accommodate this growth, we can have these buildings with much smaller footprints and we can require that they meet environmentally sound business, I'm sorry, inventor, inventor, environmentally sound construction codes. That means that the really smart builders, looking at the demographic that we anticipate coming in here, they will have things like rooftop gardens with permeable surfaces. They will be investing in green space in and around their construction. And with those developments and with the investment that comes with that, Linwood will be able to dedicate more space to trees and will be able to dedicate more space to, more space to just community gathering areas. We'll need to cut down fewer trees because we'll be going up rather than spreading broadly. But this is a difficult challenge. The city currently is facing a request to change a, a, a local community ballpark, just a local sandlot type of thing into housing for those that are in need. These are two competing interests. Certainly, we need more low-income housing, great use, but we also need those open sandlot types of areas. So these are the things that experience on the council and the community are critical to help us balance those needs.
Thank you. Ms. Lashgari, as more development occurs in Linwood, it also means the removal of trees from our city. Do you have ideas for protecting the city's tree canopy?
I am a big advocate of parks and green space. I think it is very important that we heed the warnings that is coming our way and see as growth is coming our way to make sure that we not only increase our green space, but make sure that all these condos that are going upward, as Mr. Decker mentioned, is to make sure that there are green spaces allocated for those individuals as well. I think we just need to continue to work with the Parks and Recreation Department to make sure that all the parks that we have currently not only add to that as we move on, as we grow vertically and make sure that there is green space for them. That's all I can say. I'm not gonna, I don't know how to add the canopy or make sure I, by just planting trees and making sure that when they are creating apartments and condos, that there is definitely green space allocated to those areas as well to make sure that we do continue to have our green spaces. Environmentally, that is very important. And I had mentioned in other conversations that I've had, there is environmental inequity. So people that are living in the socioeconomic strains have less green space and therefore less oxygen, less places to go walk around, and that is important. So environmental equity is very important to make sure that all areas of Linwood continue to be as beautiful as it is. I love driving around Linwood with these gorgeous fall colors that we have.
Thank you very much. Do either of you have anything more to add on that topic?
I do very quickly on this one.
Okay.
Linwood has a program where we offer incentives to homeowners and businesses to create what are essentially water sinks. And that means they'll take, they'll dedicate a portion of their property to a green space where runoff from rain and from their impervious surfaces has an opportunity to return to the soils. This type of investment is, does hit our budget. This is not free to the city. But this is a huge investment for Linwood and in an area that I think we need to really continue investing. It not only beautifies our city, but is great for the environment. And second to that is I've discussed the annexation of the areas around the city of Linwood. Certainly, I think the city does a better job of stewardship, stewarding our environment in those open spaces than the county has been doing. If I look at the way that they have allowed multifamilies to be built on our borders, their concern over environmental and protecting tree canopy certainly seems to be far less than what our intent is in that space. So I come back to, I think Linwood needs to be more aggressive in how we are handling those properties and ensure that they fall under our governance sooner or not later so that they don't continue to be paved over for construction that isn't as environmentally sound as we'd like to see in our city.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's nothing more from Ms. Lashgari, we'll move on to the final question. And we'll start with you, Ms. Lashgari. Tell voters why you will be a better city council member than your opponent.
I will be a better city council member because of my lived experiences. As a woman, as an immigrant, as a member of the LGBTQ community, there has been many challenges to be where I am. I think I understand the issues that many of the people in our community are facing. Why am I a better candidate than Ms. Decker? We are both Huskies, so I cannot go there. But I just have a true commitment in my heart for the city of Linwood. And I know that my experiences as a business manager in healthcare will give me the tools that I need to continue to work in the finances area of our city. And having worked with the leadership of our city, I truly believe I can collaborate nonpartisan, in a nonpartisan way. And I am very proud to say that I am endorsed by people like Mayor Nicholas Smith, Councilmember Christine Frisell, Councilmember Ruth Ross, Representative Cindy Ryu, Representative Lauren Davis and Senator Jesse Solomon. And I think by having their support and having their endorsement, I have shown to them with what I have done in the last four years that I do have a commitment for the city of Linwood and I do not have a personal agenda here besides wanting to help my community and be of service to my community. I think bringing a lens of equity to all the things that I do is also important in moving forward as our city continues to grow and we become more diverse in population. And I think my personal background and who I am can be a great asset for the city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, it's your turn to say, to tell voters why you would be a better city council member than your opponent.
I'm actually not going to answer your question. I'm not going to tell you why I would be a better candidate, but I'm going to tell you why I am a great candidate for this position. I have tremendous experience in the community. I have been here a long time. I have seen huge change in Linwood. And I've been listening to the community for decades. I have been involved in city planning for literally for decades. And that means I've been involved in public comment, both officially as part of our planning procedures, but also just, you know, on the sidewalk, out among the people. I have a huge established community of friends and some relatives in the city. And, you know, they are not shy about telling me what they think and what they feel and asking me to help them better understand where we are and where we're going. I've lived in a great variety of places around the world. I talked about some of those in my introductory statement. I've studied international economics, demographics and politics. I am able to distill those observations and learnings into a common sense, empathetic approach to addressing Linwood's challenges. Linwood is my home. I, I own my home here. I have for a long time, for a very long time. And I want my sons, who are now grown and attending University of Washington Seattle also, go dogs, to choose Linwood as their home. This is what my wife and I want. We want their families and our grandchildren, when they come along, to be right here in Linwood where they can enjoy the prosperity of Linwood and they know this is a safe place for them, not just a safe place, but also a great investment for them to buy their homes in. I am invested in this community in a multitude of ways and I care deeply about the residents of this community, both today and the future. I'm not joining the city council for any reason other than to help this city become a great community for those who live here, for people of all walks of life, across all demographics, to make sure we provide great opportunities by bringing great jobs and investment, great housing and really build Linwood into just a stellar community for everyone who wants to be here. So this is why I will be a great city council member, just as I have been for the last period of time that I've been on the city council. So thank you. And I apologize for not actually answering your question.
Thank you. It's, I appreciate it. Appreciate both of your responses. Thank you. So we're now moving on to the closing statements and you each have one minute. And you will receive the usual timekeeper warnings for thirty second and stop. And since Mr. Decker started first, Ms. Lashgari, you can go first with your closing statement.
Again, I want to thank you, Linda Johns and Teresa for this opportunity. I am running for city council because for the last four years I have worked with the city leadership and I truly believe that Linwood is a wonderful city and we need to continue to make sure that we keep ahead of the curve that is managing the growth. It is also very important for me to continue for our city to be a safe city. So safety is important and all are welcome. Again, is something that I mean from the bottom of my heart. I want to make sure that everybody in the city of Linwood knows that. And also I want to make sure that we bring healthcare equity, environmental equity and economic equity to the people of Linwood and to make sure that as we grow, that we don't leave people behind, that we can People behind, that we can all be part of this together in our wonderful city of Linwood. Please vote for me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, your closing statement?
Great. Uh, I thank you also for this forum. This has been a wonderful forum, an opportunity for the city to get to know us a little bit. Normally in these types of conversations, this is where I stand up and wave my arms around as my passion for Linwood really drives action. So hard for me just to sit here and talk to the camera, but. I have to sit here, so I'll do my best to share my passion with you through what I have to say. Linwood is entering an extremely important time in our history. Never before has the pace of growth and change in our society. And in our city been as rapid as it is today. We have to make wise decisions today because those are going to impact generations down the road. We have to properly manage growth and change that's coming to Linwood. So that everyone who lives here now and will come to us in the future will have opportunity for to be to prosper. Regardless of race, creed, religion or other demographic. We must ensure our law enforcement and first responders are properly supported. And we must ensure they know that we as the community stand with them. It will take energy, vision, enthusiasm to fulfill that vision, but. Perhaps most importantly, it will take experience. I have that experience through my time at City Council Planning Commission and my other community involvement, so. I am asking for your vote. I will be a great council member and I'm going to help Linwood become a truly visionary city for all. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I want to again thank both of you for. Being here tonight and taking time out and again, thanks to the Linwood Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring with us. And also to Linda Jones for doing a fabulous job as timekeeper. Uh, and much appreciation again to our sponsors, Edmunds College, James Russell, PLLC and Office Tech. And reminder, very important reminder that ballots for the November second general election will be in the mail. Um, uh, on October fifteenth, so be sure to vote. And thank you again for joining us and uh. Good luck to both candidates.